Your way to the podium. All speakers have three minutes. If you'd like to talk about a topic that's not on the agenda, please complete a blue speaker card and give it to the officer in the back of the room. Items that are not on the agenda are heard at the end of the voting meeting. Glendale has seven city council members. Mayor Jerry Wires, Vice Mayor Joyce Clark of the Yucca District, Councilman Jamie Aldama of the Ocatillo District, Councilmember Ian Hugh of the Cactus District, Councilmember Bart Turner of the Beryl District, Councilmember Ray Mollner of the Saguaro District, and Councilmember Lauren Tomachoff of the Choya District. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Welcome. Glendale City Council Meeting, May 9, 2023. This meeting is called to order. I'm going to ask everybody that's standing there at the table, take a card, sit down, fill it out, and then you can bring it up to our clerk that's sitting just here to my left. But let's get everybody to have their seats, please, so we can get started. With that said, we'll go ahead and conduct a roll call. And then following that will be our invocation. And that's going to be delivered by Bill Davenport of the Calvary Church. And then, listen up, guys. If you're wearing a hat, if appropriate, I would appreciate it if you would remove your hats. Please remain standing at that time for the invocation. So with that said, we'll do our roll call. Councilmember Aldama.
Present.
Councilmember Hugh.
Here.
Councilmember Melner.
Present.
Councilmember Tomachoff.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Vice Mayor.
Here.
Chair is present. Next two items on our agenda is the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation again, Mr. Bill Davenport from Calvary Church. Again, gentlemen, if you're wearing a hat, if you'd remove it, I would appreciate it. After he's finished, please remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. Will you please join me in a word of prayer? Dear heavenly Father, we come before you this hour, asking for your help and blessing as we gather here together to be of service. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find the way to excel in our work. And lastly, we pray for the great city of Glendale. We ask for your favor and protection for all of its citizens, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Chair. Everybody join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay. Could I... Next is the agenda. Next on our agenda is the consideration of the minutes from the April 25, 2023 voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the April 25, 2023 voting meeting minutes?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve the minutes of the April 23, 25, 2023 voting meeting.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's eyes have it, do have it. That does pass. I'm going to go ahead and do our proclamation and awards. With that said, we're proclaiming May 25 as Historic Preservation Month in Glendale, and we're celebrating the 50th year of the Glendale Historical Society. And so I would ask why I'm working my way down if you folks would be working your way forward. Brenda Bartle is president of the Glendale Historical Society, along with current and former Glendale Historical Society officers. If you work your way towards the front, just below me here. Also, we have Glendale Historic Preservation Commission Chair Timothy Quinn and Vice Chair Theora Hackenberg. If you all would move... Come on this side, please, and then I'll come down and we'll do your proclamation. Yep. All right, I'm going to kind of stand this way a little bit. Whereas the Glendale, Arizona Historical Society is celebrating 50 years of promoting and preserving Glendale's history. And whereas Glendale, Arizona Historical Society was founded in 1973 and is dedicated to historic preservation in Glendale, including collecting and preserving artifacts, photographs, oral histories, and written materials, researching Glendale's histories, buildings, people, and lifestyles, and disseminating information about Glendale's history. And whereas Glendale, Arizona Historical Society has a mission to promote public awareness and appreciation of the history of Glendale and the surrounding region by collecting, preserving, and interpreting documentary material and material objects, it disseminates historical information and supports scholarly research. And whereas Glendale, Arizona Historical Society owns and maintains a historic Manistee Ranch building and site, it conducts tours of the Manistee Ranch and the historic Saguaro Ranch Guest House. The society has facilitated more than 2,070 weddings since 1988 in the Saguaro Ranch Rose Garden. And whereas Glendale, Arizona Historical Society enhances the quality of life in the city, fosters interest in the past, formal historical inquiry and informational information, exchanges believing that an understanding of the past eliminates the present and gives vision for generations to come. Now therefore, I, Jerry P. Wires, Mayor of the City of Glendale, Arizona, on behalf of our city council, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Historic Preservation Month. Be it further resolved, I encourage all residents to celebrate the nation's and our community's heritage through historic places. And then this is not on this, but I'm just going to tell you, if you haven't had an opportunity to view Manistee Ranch, to go out and see it, or Saguaro Ranch Park, or the Rose Garden, and I'm talking to all you folks, you need to do that. You really do. Glendale's got some really beautiful places, historical significance, and it's yours. You own it. You, the Glendale residents, own it. So get out there if you have a chance, look at it, and maybe you'll like it enough where maybe you'll join these folks behind me. So who's receiving this?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right. So would you like to speak?
No.
Okay. Okay. So with that, why don't all of us move to the other side, and we'll get a couple pictures real quick. All right. Good evening.
Yeah.
Cheers.
Thank you.
Okay. This next one I may or may not do. Varshini, are you here?
She's here.
Where's she at? Well, come on down. Okay, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege here real quick. This young lady works her way up front. Come on, come on around. Either way, either way. We have a thing in Glendale called MAYAC, Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission. This young lady, along with, I don't know, there's probably about 30 right now that we have MAYAC students. They're high school students that either live in Glendale or attend Glendale High Schools. At the same time, they do community service. They have the opportunity, as a commission, to tell me what they think that is wrong with Glendale, or what's right with Glendale, and if there's something that they feel that we could change, they can bring it up. And at the same time, they're required to give back to the community. Required to give back to the community. The requirement is very, very, very small. I think it's 20 hours, Anne, is that correct? They're required to do 20 hours in a whole year. Okay. This young lady, come over here, say your name. I can't pronounce it, so...
Varshini.
And last name.
Muttuvina Agam.
That's why I didn't try. That's why I didn't try. This young lady right here, the required 20, has today, at this moment, has done 62 hours of her time so far. She plans to do more before the end of this month, and this actually, this Friday, three days from now?
Yeah.
Two, three, three days from now, she's going to be attending an event that I'm putting on that actually recognizes young people going into the military. And so I feel very strongly she's probably going to have close to 70 hours. That may not sound like a big deal to a lot of you, but you tell me, a young person that can carry the GPA that she does, you probably speak three languages, I'm guessing?
Two.
Only two? Okay. All right. What a slacker. Two languages, yeah. Yeah, I speak Texan and English, and that's about it. She's incredible. She's just absolutely incredible. She sets the standard for all the MAYAC students, and I couldn't be more proud of her. So we have a plaque that I'm going to give to you tonight, okay? And it says, "MAYAC of Glendale, Arizona, Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission Public Service Award Presented to..." You say your name.
Yo Varshini Muttuvina Agam.
That one. "In recognition of your volunteer service in Glendale and commitment to leading by example." Very, very, very proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I don't know where your parents are, but you know what? God bless them. You've got a great kid. Very proud, very proud.
We're going to move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda is items three through 11. Items of the consent agenda are a routine feature that have been previously studied by the city council at a workshop session. Now, they are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. We have any speaker cards for any of the consent agenda items?
No, sir.
Okay. So can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items three through 11?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve the consent agenda items three through 11.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the consent agenda items three through 11. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's eyes have it, do have it. That motion does carry. We're now going to move on to consent resolutions, and that's going to be item number 12. Ms. Bauer, would you please read consent resolutions? And do we have any speaker cards on these?
No, sir.
Okay.
Resolution number R-23-33, a resolution the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation, IGA 21-0008180-I, for the installation of bicycle lanes and enhancement of pedestrian facilities on 67th Avenue between Missouri Avenue and Choya Street. And that concludes the consent resolutions.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve item 12 on consent resolutions agenda? Anybody?
Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Melner.
I move that we approve consent resolution number R-23-33.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Aldama to approve item 12 on the consent resolutions agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Here's eyes have it, do have it. That motion also carries. Moving on to bids and contracts. Ms. Bauer, can you introduce item 13?
Authorization to enter into a professional service agreement with Kowalski Construction Inc. for homeless encampment cleanup services. There are no speaker cards.
Okay. Any discussion? Any questions from the council? Can I get a motion to approve item 13?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move we authorize the city manager to enter into the described agreement with Kowalski Construction, Inc.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff. Any discussion? Hearing none. We will conduct a roll call vote, and we're going to start with Councilmember Aldama.
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I will explain my vote.
Go ahead.
As is my habit and practice, I will be voting no on this bid and contract, as well as the other ones that will follow. There is no continuity of oversight by council with a five-year contract when council terms are only four years. So I vote nay.
Thank you. Chair votes aye, that motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, can you introduce item 14, please?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Instrumentation and Controls LLC for MSA, gas monitors, parts, services, and accessories. There are no speaker cards.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 14?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 14.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Aldama, a second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Land development actions, we're not going to move on to that. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 15, please?
Resolution number R-23-31, a resolution the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the general plan map of the city of Glendale, Arizona by approving general plan amendment GPA 22-06 for a property located at the southwest corner of 75th Avenue and Bethany Home Road. Ordinance number O-23-12, an ordinance to the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning property located at the southwest corner of 75th Avenue and Bethany Home Road from CEO Commercial Office to C1 Neighborhood Commercial, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance to be recorded.
Okay. Public hearing is now open on item number 15, resolution R-23-31, ordinance 023-12. Ms. Perry, before you get started, I'm going to try to kind of give everybody an outline of where we're at here. We've got a lot of speaker cards up here. At the same time, I understand that there was a development just before the meeting started. Councilmember Tomachoff apparently has items that she had talked with the developer about would he make some special arrangements. He's agreed to, I believe, most all those. So after Ms. Perry does hers, then I'm going to go to you and let you talk about what you're doing, and then I'm going to ask the developer to come up and tell us what he's agreed to. Everybody good on that? Okay. Ms. Perry.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is a general plan amendment request and a rezoning application titled Shops at 75th. The applicant is Diversified Partners. Most of the council, if not all the council, may be aware of what they have done in the city. A lot of their developments and entitlement applications has focused in the entertainment district area, the sports and entertainment district. They have the Enflago that's off of 91st and Glendale Avenue. And then they're also in the process of working through planning off of 91st Avenue and Cardinal Sway for multiple restaurants that would require a CUP through the Planning Commission. And I want to make note of that because the emphasis has been focused on supporting the sports and entertainment district. The application before you this evening is now focusing more so in a residential area where they're going to be proposing, proposing, or they are proposing, a general plan amendment as well as a rezoning application to change the land uses to be more compatible for neighborhood commercial land use. Okay, maybe that's not going to work for you. Okay. So once again, the request is for the general plan amendment to change the land use district from office to general commercial. And the second request is to change the rezoning from commercial office to neighborhood commercial. Okay. Here's a vicinity map depicting the proposed site location from City Hall. The site is located at the southwest corner of 75th Avenue and Bethany Home Road, which is approximately 2.3 miles from City Hall. The general plan map, as you can see, current land use destination for office. That land use that is being proposed for the general commercial is in line with the existing general plan land use to the east, which is also currently at GC for the general commercial. Next, the map depicts the zoning proposal for C1, which once again is your neighborhood commercial. And as you can see, the property to the east is currently zoned C1 as well. Here's an aerial photo, just to give context to the proposed subject site in comparison. To the south, you can see Tomachoff's Farms. To the east, across 75th Avenue, is commercial zone property that identified earlier as C1, where there is a CVS. To the north is multiple single-family residential, and to the west, that used to be a elementary school, and is currently going to be used as a community resources location. Here is the conceptual site plan that the applicant has provided. As you can see, there's multiple paths that's being proposed for this site, which is approximately 3.7 acres in size. They are proposing two access points off of 75th Avenue, and there is one access point being proposed off of Bethany Home Road, which will allow for a right-in and right-out The applicant has disclosed that Pad A is being considered for a Dutch Brothers. In order for that to manifest, then obviously council would have to approve the proposals that are before you this evening, and then they would have to go before a planning commission for a conditional use permit approval by the planning commission. As staff has been working with the development team, which also includes the Transportation Department, as of right now, they're proposing a stacking of 30 vehicles. That's taking consideration of what we know that the market can bring for Dutch Brothers and what we have seen at other Dutch Brothers locations. This is not finalized as of yet. It's still going through review, and it will continue to go through review until they come before the planning commission with the request for the approval for the CUP. So regarding this participation process, the applicant first held a neighborhood meeting in October of 2021, in which one individual attended, who was in support of the proposal. Because of the duration of going through the review process, staff recommended to the applicant to do a follow-up letter to the surrounding neighbors to give them another opportunity to speak on the applications. That was done in May of 2022, in which four individuals responded in support and in opposition. The application was heard before planning commission on April the 10th. Staff gave a recommendation of approval with three stipulations. There's various factors that staff looked at, one being that it is off of two arterial streets. And throughout the city, a lot of two layers of arterial streets, you do see commercial property. Originally, the property was zoned for residential, and there was no proposals for development. Then in 2001, an application came before city council requesting to change the property to its current entitlements, and that was approved by council in 2001. So there has not been any development since then. So now we have the application that is before you once again to change the entitlements for the neighborhood commercial, which perhaps may be more successful in developing the site. Okay. At the planning commission meeting, there was 47 residents who signed cards in oppositions. Of those 14 individuals spoke in opposition, conveying concerns related to increase in traffic, crime, and transit-related issues. The applicant and staff both tried to address those concerns before planning commission. Obviously, we recognize that there will be an increase in traffic. There already is an increase in traffic with the connectivity from Bethany Home Road going into Cardinal Sway. Crime and transit-related issues, those are before us, and that can take place with any type of development. In good faith, the development or the developers have indicated that they would do their part to address any crime issues or transit issues that would take place on their property. Planning commission gave a recommendation for approval of the general plan amendment request, and their recommendation to council was for a denial on the rezoning application. They also encouraged the applicant to have additional conversations with the residents. And the applicant took that encouragement and executed it, and then conducted another Zoom meeting to talk about the issues that was addressed at the planning commission. The same issues was presented once again. So I still believe that the proposals are appropriate for that area, looking at the history, looking at the general plan, if it's in with the goals and the policies of the general plan. And staff also still believe that the entitlements for the rezoning is appropriate for a piece of property that has been undeveloped, undeveloped, and located on two arterial streets, affronting two arterial streets. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Go ahead.
Ready for me?
Your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. So Ms. Perry, I emailed, after talking to some of the residents that I know, some of them related to, some of them not, I said, "Look, guys, this is going to get developed. It's already zoned for development." So how, what uses would you be, would you object to? So I received a little bit of back and forth, and I ended up with a list of uses, and I think, did some, is that what you passed out? It was this list? Do they have a copy of this?
Mayor, Council, no. What I passed out, and I failed to mention, is that there's two petitions that I put on the dais that was in support of the proposals.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to read this list, and I sent this to Ms. Perry and her director, Mr. Huggins, on Friday. So the list I got from the residents includes adult boutique slash novelty merchandise, blood or bodily fluid donation center, check cashing or payday loan center, a dispensary, a dollar store, a gas station, a gun store, a laundromat, a liquor store, pawn shop, smoke or vape shop, tax prep shop, tattoo shop, or thrift shop. And it is my understanding that the applicant has agreed to all but one, which is the tax prep, which would be general office, which it's already zoned for essentially anyway. Is that correct?
Mayor and Council, that is correct.
So I feel, I feel good that the applicant, I can see him sitting there, that he was willing to take this input from the residents and be willing to agree to these terms. So I don't know if anybody, you know, maybe somebody still doesn't want to speak. The liquor store and a lot of the things that were objectionable to the neighbors is not going to happen. So I guess we just open it up to the public hearing? I'll have to make it, I'll have to...
I'll get there.
But I'll have to, well, once we make the motion, I'll have to amend it to include these, all but the tax prep, but...
Right. Okay, we'll do the rest of it, and we'll get you there. Okay, with that said, I've got so many papers up here, it's hard to keep all this straight. Andy, are you... Who's Andy? That's you. Okay. What she said, is there anything that she did not represent correctly?
Just as long as...
Come on up to the microphone. I didn't know if you needed to come up or not. For the record, state your name.
Rafat Abduljaber, but you could refer to me as AJ.
Okay, and then where you're from, sir?
Diversified Partners.
With, in what city?
In Scottsdale, Arizona.
Okay.
Everything is correct, Councilmember Tomachoff. We want to make sure, though, that if there is a restaurant that, as a secondary use, serves alcohol, that that would be allowed, and if there was a convenience store as a secondary use that sold cigarettes or tobacco items, that that would also be allowed. With that, yes, we agree to those items. They wouldn't be uses we would rent to it. With that, yes, we agree to those items, they wouldn't be uses we would rent to anyway.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, I've got, I've got a paper here, says Andy Konavolov. Am I butchering that name? From Sun City. Is that you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, did you need to speak?
Well, is there an agreement up? I have.
Well.
You see my statement there, you'd love me to speak that?
Actually, there's not a statement here. I have a white piece of paper that has your name. So if you would, for the record, state your full name. We don't need your fiscal address, I just need to know what city that you're from, if it's Glendale, the name of the district, or if you don't know your district, the crossroads. Now, you have three minutes, sir.
I'm Andrew Konavolov, I live in Sun City. Do you need my street address?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm going to tell you what Bill Jack Tomachoff does not want you to know. For a decade, Bill got free parking and storage. He pocketed a lot of cash, tax free. To him, that's smart business. Bill thought he was encroaching on private land like he did at our church and cemetery and would take it by adverse possession. Now he cannot steal it, he is furious. Bill isn't just a bully as reported in the news on April 26th, he is much worse. He's a viciously jealous and aggressive liar, thief, cheat, and deceiver. None of Bill's brothers.
We're not going that route, sir.
Okay, I'll jump through this. Okay, none of Bill's brothers appeared before the planning commission because Bill took their farm and didn't share with his brothers. Bill's claim before the commission that he owes him favors because John F. Long donated land for the city airport is crazy. Bill was trying to steal land from the elderly Jim John Tregaboff in Australia, who is a nephew of Mary and John Long, correcting what happened at the planning commission. I surveyed the four square mile area and contrary to testimony given, found no evidence of homeless people, no shopping carts, no tents, no panhandlers, but some graffiti. The most obvious danger is at our stolen Russian cemetery on Seventy Fifth Avenue, north of Maryville, across the street from the Independence High School. There's dirt, weeds, and trash cover the public sidewalk. A tree fell years ago on the fence. Bill and his forged papers used Tomachoff Farms as a mailing address for both the stolen cemetery and church.
Sir, we're, don't make accusations, sir.
The church lot is covered with weeds. I reported a code compliance, you have photographs. The John F. Long estate is developing the northeast corner. When this southwest corner is developed, safe sidewalks will surround the intersection, semi trucks won't park, more people will have jobs and bathrooms will be in the shops. So these people abandoned their Russian heritage and they've attacked us, they've ruined our funerals, they've locked us out of our church, and have stolen a lot of money. And so I, you have my written statement. So I hope someday that they will come to their Christian senses and give back our church and cemetery. And we have to meet in homes right now, they've ruined almost a dozen funerals in the past. Thank you all.
Okay, I am going to change the order of how I was doing this, Mr. Tomachoff. Bill Tomachoff, Jr. Again, I'm going to ask everybody in the crowd if you speak. We're not going down that road, folks. Let's talk about the issue itself, not about hard feelings, okay? Mr. Tomachoff, you have three minutes. State your name and your district you live in, sir.
My name is Bill Tomachoff and I live in Yucca District. I am neighbors to A J. I'm not against the development. Actually, what bothered me the most is how the city conducted themselves when the developer came. They tried to pass it without anybody knowing it. And then when the people were notified and they came to the planning and zoning commission, the planner says, well, we're sorry, we already made up our minds, you're too late for the party. I asked Mrs. Clark over a year ago, what was going on with my corner? She says, I know nothing about it. So what are the people to do? And then a developer comes in on us, we're not the bullies, we didn't ask for it, we know it's going to be developed, but why couldn't you get off your car and say, hey, this is what we want to do in your neighborhood? Talk to the people in your community, just like a normal person, and see what happens like that. You know, the city makes decisions without public awareness. You could go down the line from the Coyotes to whatever, they're developing Rovi Farms. Have you guys looked into the property? All the contaminants on the dairy, the chemicals, that's going to be absorbed through the concrete and then in ten years, we're going to have lawsuits because children are getting cancer? Would you want your child to play in that dirt? I don't think so. So things have to be changed. You guys need to realize, you're affecting people, you're affecting communities. You just had a group of people up here to preserve history. Well, here's history. I don't run from nothing, I don't hide from nothing. This man can talk all he wants all day. He's free to come to a church, he's free to bury his people, nobody's stopping him. So people want to say allegations? I don't know Walt, I bet he's a good man, I'd like to know him, but I'm not bullying him, I'm listening to my neighbors. My neighbors say, get there and talk, talk for us. They had a meeting, a Zoom call, the neighbors weren't on the Zoom call, they said, we want to meet him in person, we want to meet this man. I met A J, I like him, I don't have a problem with A J, nobody. So that's my disgust, is how it was carried out and stuff like that. And when Lauren mentioned, what are they going to allow and not allow, are you actually going to step up and do that? Are you going to stand by your word? You guys might not be here in ten, fifteen, twenty years, but we are. We're the ones that have to suffer consequences for you and people's actions. It's, that's just the way it is. You know, we like to build things, we like to see things, life goes on, it's a progress, that's how it is. Has anybody called Dutch Brothers?
Your time's up.
Because Dutch Brothers says that their number one priority is community, being a part of the community, and being accepted into the community.
Your time's up, sir.
I understand, but you know, that's just how I feel. I don't come to city council meetings too often. And Mrs. Clark, my prayers and thoughts are with you and Charles, and I hope he's doing okay.
Thank you. No clapping, no applause, no anything. We're going to keep this quorum decorum proper, okay? Next person, Gloria Dahl, from Sun City. You're not, I can barely hear you, okay, does not want to speak and does oppose. I have Wayne Dahl. Does not want to speak but does oppose. I have somebody without a name, so we're not going to do you. Claudia Hernandez.
I'm a woman, I'm not going to speak.
She is opposed, does not need to speak, is that correct?
No.
It's not, okay. Claudia, do you need to speak?
No.
No, okay, very good. Okay. Mike Zeremba?
Yeah, Zeremba.
Okay, and you would like to speak?
Yes, I would.
Okay, very good. Again, state your district you live in, sir, and you have three minutes.
Okay, I live in the Yucca District, I live right across the street from Coyote Ridge.
Okay, and then your name?
Mike Zeremba.
Very good.
Now, I've lived behind a farm for thirty five years. I married into the family, I have no financial gain, I have nothing to get out of this. The fact is, I'm going to reiterate what Bill said, there was one, or Ms. Perry also, there was one person at the original meeting, okay, and that person was for it. Then they sent out another letter, which there was four. So when Bill called me after that, I called Mr. Lerma and he said, because I live three hundred and, out of that two hundred and forty five foot notification zone, the problem is, is it's the, it's your policy and how you could conduct your business. So I talked to Mr. Lerma, I asked him about, you know, the traffic and he said, well, we're going to conduct a traffic analysis, well, at the commission hearing, or the, yeah, I think it was a commission hearing in April, or March, April, yeah. He had indicated that there's going to be some traffic. Well, he must have done the, he must have conducted it at midnight, because I live right on Bethany. And you can come down there anytime and sit on the front porch and watch the traffic, it's terrible. And I talked to you three years ago at a community meeting and asked you what you were going to do about the traffic and you directed me to a commander of Glendale and I did the same thing. I invited him to come and sit in the driveway anytime he wants, any of their officers. Nobody's ever come down, I never see an officer, a motors officer monitoring traffic, they're always parked at Coyote Ridge in the back. Nothing against police officers, okay, just letting you know. But it's just frustrating. So it's the actual policy and how you guys conduct the business. If you would have alerted or sent letters out to the people in the neighborhood, maybe you would have had a little bit more, you know, positives coming out of this. And I'm not really, I'm not opposed to it, because I understand development has to happen, progress has to happen for this community to thrive. So I talked to A J personally over the phone and he indicated that, and assured me that he would not lease any tenants that would create problems in the neighborhood. So like I said, it's not like I'm opposed to it, I want to see development. The other thing is, if you put a Dutch Brothers down there, you might as well state, put a police officer down there for the whole time, permanently, because you guys can't manage a one mile stretch of road. There's always accidents. There's been, over the last three years, there's been two guys that have drove their cars through my mother-in-law's front fence, right on Bethany.
Your time's up, sir.
So I just, well, it's a way.
Thank you.
I know you're going to, I know you're going to approve it, so, but it's.
Thank you, sir. Michael Tomachoff, wish to speak?
I just oppose.
I'm sorry?
I just oppose.
He opposes. Hey, I can't hear up here, is Wayne here?
I want to speak.
Okay, he opposes. Trina Jaycox opposes. You do want to speak? Okay, very good. Again, if you would, state your name for the record and the district you live in, we don't need your address.
I don't know the district, it's Seventy Fourth and Pallaverty, Glendale.
Very good.
My name's Trina Jaycox. And I oppose this development because of the traffic that's going to come with it. Before I moved over to this area, I lived over on Fifty First Avenue and all of, and they put in a Walmart, they put in a Chickle Cay, they put in a C V S, a Dunkin' Donuts, and after that development came in, I got hit in a crosswalk. And it's only by the grace of God that I'm here today, because of the traffic and me getting hit in a crosswalk. And that's why I oppose this. I know the dangers that come with more development and whatnot. So I moved over to this area, over off of Seventy Fourth and Pallaverty, because it wasn't as congested. And you add more stuff and it's going to get more congested. And that's all I got, thanks.
Thank you. Brooke Tomachoff?
I just oppose.
She opposes. Selacia Resago? I probably really butchered that one. Are you here? Okay, apparently not, that person opposes. Husband, I guess, or brother, or father, or somebody, Romano, same last name? No? Also opposes. James Masters?
I am not part of that, I have a statement to make.
Okay, nothing, nothing with this particular issue, so we'll put, you did have item number fifteen on there, sir. Who am I talking to, where are you at?
I'm right here.
Okay, you wrote number fifteen on top of this, so that's the item we're on.
I wrote nothing on the top of it, sir. Did I remember? May I see that face?
Tell me your name. What is your name? James Masters, what does that say? What's on the top?
Oppose item fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I wrote that.
Okay, all right, okay. Sir, we just figured out who did it. We just figured out who did it. So you want to speak, you want to speak after the end of this is over, correct? Okay, no problem. I'm just trying to make sure I cover everybody. Bill Tomachoff, I already did you, did I notice there are two of you?
No, oppose.
Okay, opposes.
Good evening, Mayor Wires and members of council. My name is Karen Aborn and I live on Griffin Lane in the Okatillo District. I'm a resident, a residential property and a small business owner here, based in Glendale. Having been actively involved in the development of southwestern Glendale for over fifty years, I am resigned to the fact that commercial development will come to this corner despite its original residential designation at annexation in nineteen eighty four. However, I am alarmed by the disingenuous approach to the project by the applicant, his publicist, developer, and even the planning department. Ten days before the posted final hearing date, and three days later, the Arizona Republic ran an article headlined Dutch Bros Canes Part of Glendale's New One Hundred Million Dollar Developments. The Raising Canes reference is included with other restaurants that will have locations in En Fuego, a development near Westgate, according to the Glendale Daily Planet, Raising Canes opened seventeen months ago on November second, two thousand twenty one. Since the article also erroneously noted that this project was approved by the planning commission, but only the general plan amendment was, I emailed the reporter to ask if she fact checked the story, spoke directly with the diversified partner CEO she quoted, and attended the hearing. She did not reply. The article read to me like a paid advertisement in the Phoenix Business Journal. Then I found internet media hits back to February using some of the same phrases. This PR puff piece journalism reminds me of the Stonehaven Developers Meeting invites offering free ice cream to meeting attendees. Another concern is the type of traffic impacted Dutch Bros facility, if there really would be one, since I did contact them, what it would generate at this corner using the project footprint submitted. Drive-through customer wait times for Dutch Bros locally, as well as ones I have observed in other states, routinely backup traffic in the street in the same way that Pete's Fish and Chips blocks Glendale Avenue on Friday afternoons with or without a train. The corporation's contact person agreed with me. If Dutch Bros anchors this project, major adjustments would be needed for ingress and egress regardless of what planning engineers tell us from their statistical projections. The citizens who came here tonight lived the traffic patterns. But even more troubling to me is the fact that the applicant, as is his right, has this parcel listed for sale with in-site land development, a listing identified as active.
If you can wrap it up, our time's up.
I will. That the listing was active as of one fifteen this afternoon.
Thank you.
I will give you a copy of the listing.
Hello, my name is Oscar Gonzalez. Live here in Glendale, lived here for the last thirty four years.
Okay, hold the microphone up, sir. You're a lot taller than the last one, go ahead.
A little bit taller. My name is Oscar Gonzalez, lived here in Glendale last thirty four years. I'm in favor for the new development coming up, I think it's great. What I've heard here tonight is a lot of people bickering that we don't have enough cops, you know, out there watching. you know, out there watching the traffic, that there's going to be traffic. Well, guess what? That tax money that, uh, that's going to bring us, is going to pay for us to be able to hire more officers, more people out there. I heard a lot of bickering between family that doesn't really have anything to do with this development. I understand there's hard feelings between them, but what does that have to do with Glendale? As a Glendale resident, I, I've seen everything expand. I've seen, um, you know, when grand was, every intersection was a light, guess what? We expanded and we grew. This is just part of Glendale growing. Why wouldn't we want Glendale to grow? Why wouldn't we want the best for our city? Why wouldn't we want the income for our taxes to be able to grow, to put the bike lanes, to, you know, put back into community? I, I don't see a negative in this, other than people taking it, um, hurtfully personally. You know, there is no downside to this. There's going to be traffic. There's going to be traffic anyways. With, uh, Glendale, with the Bethany going now to Cardinal's Way, there's going to be traffic. There's no way around it. It's going to happen. I just think this is the best for the city. Other people will sit here and say they're speaking for the community when they live in Scottsdale, when they live in Sun City. Guess what? I live in Glendale. I have never moved out of Glendale. I'm still in Glendale. I speak for Glendale. They don't. This is the best thing for Glendale. Developing all of Glendale should be what we're all going for.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Okay, uh, now, no, no. Not going to do that. Next time, I'm going to ask people to leave, okay? Uh, I'm, it'd be very difficult to read this writing. It looks like Anna, I really can't tell. Bell, Bell something. You live on Seventy-Fifth Avenue?
Yeah, I oppose. I don't want to speak.
You do not need to speak, and you oppose. Okay. Um, okay. So that's through that pile. Now I have, um, um, Ms... Uh, I, I can't make out the first, the first name. Uh, live on Seventy-S sixth Drive. Uh, does not wish to speak, but, uh, does support. Okay, then I have, uh, Mullick, lives on Espera Boulevard. Uh, supports the plan in place for Seventy-Fifth Avenue and Bethany Home Road. Does wish, does not wish to speak. I have Susanna Gonzalez, uh, does not wish to speak, supports, helps Glendale's economy in that part of Glendale. I have Abdul Hassan, uh, also lives on Espera Boulevard, uh, supports and does not wish to speak. I have Jacqueline Luna, lives on Espera Boulevard, uh, does not wish to speak, that does support. I have Adam Abess, uh, does not wish to speak, but does support, says the Seventy-Fifth Avenue and Bethany Project. Am I hearing a baby? Okay, I have, uh, uh, I, I can't make out the name. Atia? First name, looks like it might be Luay. Does not wish to speak, does support the project. Daywood Elte, uh, supports the new development on Seventy-Fifth, uh, does not wish to speak. Cynthia Romo, uh, does not wish to speak. Uh, the development would help the economy of our city, supports. Ashley Galvin, uh, does not wish to speak, comments I support Dutch Bros. Elizabeth Gomez, uh, job opportunities for our teens, does not wish to speak, does support. Somebody wrote in the address where the name is, and, and your email is Drazy23, whoever that is. Uh, does not wish to speak, supports, it says I support Dutch Bros. Looks like the exact same person, except for they used a different address, so. Uh, this one also says they support one hundred percent, uh, does not wish to speak. Another person kind of wrote the same thing, Joe Lazos Laser, in favor of Dutch Bros on that corner, does not wish to speak, does support. Okay, then we have the other person that did not put their name in it. So that's all of our speaker cards. Uh, so with that said, um, is there any, any question, questions from the council as far as, uh, what was agreed to? What was it?
Put their name on there?
Yeah, I had a card-
I read every card that I had.
Yeah, but we need to put our name on.
I believe it's one that you put aside.
That you put aside?
The last one.
The very, very last one?
It was a white piece of paper.
What's your address?
There was three questions.
Fifty-ninth Avenue and-
No. No, not that one.
White piece of-
I understand that, but it's, the yellow one didn't have their name on it.
Mayor, while you're doing that, may I ask a question?
Sure.
So, Ms. Perry, wherever you are, there you are. Ms. Perry, the, uh, just to clarify, the, the permit, permitted use of a Dutch Bros will require another public hearing and another approval. This is not approving the actual Dutch Bros, this is just changing the zoning. Is that correct?
Mayor and council, that is correct.
Okay.
They will have to go for, before Appointing Commission for CUP approval for the Dutch Brothers.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, for the couple, it was just, I do not have a card for you. I, I don't have any white cards that don't have a name on them. So, my, my question is, do you need to speak?
Yes.
Okay, if you need to speak, I need you to fill out a card immediately following your speaking. So, do you, both of you need to speak, or just one?
Just one.
Okay, one of you come up, and the other one fill out the card. How's that? Let's save some time.
Excuse me. I put a card in. I would have said something, but you didn't call my name.
Sir, I read every card I had here.
You might not know how to pronounce it. You should have said my address or something.
What is your name?
Roman Bier.
I think I did call that name.
That's true.
No.
Did I not?
Hi, my name is Marina Gauna, and I live on Thunderbird Avenue and Fifty-Ninth Avenue. And I've been a Glendale resident for many years, and I have been going to the Tomachoff Farm. My concerns with this development, um, I have a civil background, and I was looking online to see if there was an environmental assessment study on this project, and I couldn't find anything. And I just want to know how this is going to affect the farm soils. And now that I'm hearing the traffic concerns, I'm also wondering how this is going to affect the school that's right next to the proposed development. So I am opposed to it based off of those two items.
Okay, base it off of just one that's not a school next door. Used to be. It's not any longer.
Um, I believe E. West from the development there.
That's not a school any longer. It's owned by the school. It's not a school.
Okay.
So, at, at any rate, thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Ramon, uh, you live in Buckeye?
Yes.
Okay, come on up. Again, state your name, the city you live in, and you have three minutes.
My name's Ramon Riesco. I lived, uh, in Glendale for eighteen years. Before I moved to Buckeye, one-eight-nine-six-one-West Monroe Street. Uh, the only thing I can say is, this is basically a formality. You already know what you're going to do. Thank you.
Okay. Questions from the council? About, uh... Okay, so you want to go ahead and make your motion?
Close it.
Yeah.
Yeah, close the public-
Yeah, you're right. Public hearing is now closed. Now, would you like to make your motion?
Um, would you like me to do both of them, or somebody else have the resolution?
Uh-
I'll do them both.
Do them both, that's fine.
I, I move that we adopt Resolution R. twenty-three dash thirty-one.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilmember Tomachoff, second from the vice mayor, uh, to move, uh, R. twenty-three dash thirty-one. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, representing this area, I have a couple of things that I'd like to say. First of all, I've known, I've known Bill and Gracie Tomachoff for ten, fifteen years. I love them. They are wonderful people. I've known Karen Aborn for probably the same number of years, and I love her too. She's a very good person. And in fact, served on the Library Advisory Board for many years. But we can agree to disagree, and we do disagree on this particular development. And there are a couple of things with regard to it that I would like to say. One, one person brought up the idea of the three-hundred-foot notification area. Well, I hate the three-hundred-foot notification area. The number of times I've heard exactly what that gentleman said was that they were three-hundred-and-one feet away, so they were never notified. In, in, we are doing a code review, and it has been proposed to change that notification area to nine-hundred feet. If I had my way, I would change the notification area to adjacent neighborhoods. Then everyone in that adjacent neighborhood would be aware of a development project. We'll see where, where that goes. Also wanted to make note of the fact that we have a Dutch Brothers right now on, I believe it's Ninety-first and Glendale, Ninety-fifth and Glendale. You've probably seen it as you've driven down Glendale Avenue. It is very busy. There are cars stacked up there, day in, day out, all day long. No traffic problems. Just because it's a Dutch Brothers or a Starbucks does not automatically mean that there's going to be traffic problems that spill out on, when it are arterial street. Lastly, a lot of people have talked about the traffic. And I, I agree with you, the traffic is horrible. But it's horrible because we opened up Cardinal's Way. And now Bethany Home Road is a feeder into Cardinal's Way. But Cardinal's Way needed to be constructed to provide yet another access point in Westgate in the sports and entertainment area. It needed to be done. I, I knew fifty years ago it would be built at some point, and I live just north of it. So I understand your concern about traffic, but I think the traffic is something that the city will continue to work through over the years, trying to figure out new ways to mitigate traffic. It's not just on Bethany. It's all over the city. Traffic is horrible everywhere. And, and no wonder, in the last eight, eight, uh, last eight years, we've added nearly thirty-thousand new residents to the city of Glendale. We build residential subdivisions all the time. We bring in more commercial, more industrial. As the city grows, as with any other large city, and we are the sixth-largest city in the state, traffic intensifies. And like any other city, we continue to look for new ways to mitigate traffic. So we are aware of the traffic on Bethany. We will continue to try to find new solutions to deal with it, just as we do in other parts of the city. For the record, I will be supporting this project. Someone mentioned residential. Well, what kind of residential do you think would come on and be built on three-point-seven acres? Take a guess. Multifamily. Is that really your alternative? To save it to be residential, so that it can become another apartment complex? I don't think so. I think under the circumstances, with a CVS being across the street, this is probably the best use for a very small parcel. And that is why I support it. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, there was mention earlier of perhaps some stipulations that, uh, might be offered on this.
I'm going to offer them on the ordinance. This is the resolution.
We're going to, we're going to take a vote on the first portion, and come back with stipulations.
The General Plan Amendment is what we're talking about now.
Yeah, I can't hear what you're saying.
Thank you.
Um, okay, am I, am I wrong?
All right, so no other discussion, is that correct? Okay, that's Tomachoff.
Well, we have a motion.
We, we, yeah, we have to vote on the resolution.
We have a motion.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and take a roll call vote. So we have a motion, it's been accepted. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Explain my vote.
Go ahead.
Just to be clear, this is on the General Plan Amendment. Um, it's a precursor to the zoning, but it's not the zoning itself yet. I vote aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Now, I'm going to explain my vote. I, I'm a neighbor. I, I live very, very close to this, very close. Yesterday morning, uh, just north of Camelback Road on Eighty-third Avenue, used to be a, I think it was about a four-acre piece of property, uh, that was, uh, I think it was called Keith's Masties. Some of you may remember that. You may not. Did you drive by it today?
Mm-hmm.
It's about six piles of, of stuff. And, and one day, they went in there and just leveled everything, just, it's... And it's sad, when you think about that, it's sad, the fact that I probably have lived in the valley, I'm not going to say as long as Ian, I know as long as you, but certainly not Mr. Turner, but I've lived here a long time, since sixty-six. And I don't like a lot of the things that are happening, because I liked things the way they were. But the fact is, is it is what it is. And I hate to say that, but it's true. If you stop and think, for the last four years solid, Maricopa County has been the fastest-growing county in the United States. Think about that. The traffic that we're experiencing isn't Glendale-only traffic. It's people that live west of us, it's using Glendale as a thoroughfare. They're coming off the freeway, they're getting on Camelback, they're getting on Bethany, on Glendale Avenue, Northern Avenue, and they're cutting across, going to Phoenix. So whether you have this or not, that traffic isn't going to go away. It's only going to get worse, because everybody west of us, everybody north of us, Phoenix south of us, everybody east of us, everybody's growing. Our, our numbers are increasing dramatically. And the number one reason is people want to live in the desert. They want to know that they, uh, can recreate, that they've got blue sky three-hundred-and-sixty days a year. Uh, that's why anybody that's not from here probably moved here, is the opportunities. And then, top it off, one of the biggest opportunities is the fact that if a person's willing to work in this valley, you can make money. If you're willing to work hard, you can make good money. Undeniable. Undeniable. So, because we're supporting a project that you may think is going to create extra traffic, as Vice Mayor had said, if that would have been multi-housing, three-story apartments, you potentially could have had two-hundred people living there, going in and out. Potentially. I mean, we don't know. I wish things could go back the way they were. I know three years ago, before, uh, uh, the, the project, the multi-housing project, I'm sorry, the, the land, what is your favorite place? Stone?
Stonehaven.
Stonehaven. I'm sorry. Stonehaven, before that went in three years ago, as I was going south on Eighty-third Avenue to go home, there was a bald eagle, probably a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty feet off of Eighty-third Avenue, that had just caught a mouse. Now, I know we're never going to see that again. I know that. And it saddens me to see that. But again, it's progress. Progress isn't always the best thing in the world, but it's going to happen. If we don't make this available to these folks, somebody else is going to find a business come in. And why would we ever take somebody who owns land of Mr. Tomachoff, tomorrow decide to sell his property and put something else in there? Is it up to us to tell him he can't sell his property, because we don't like what, what may become of that? I mean, people have landowner rights too. So there's two sides to both of this. Uh, I'll support it because of the transaction that happened. I like the fact that there won't be a liquor store there. I like that a lot. I like the fact that it's going to be limited. I don't have any problem with those exceptions. I did have a problem with it before those exceptions, so, uh, I'm, I'm willing to go ahead and move on. So I do vote aye on this, and then when we come back, where you have those limitations, I'll be looking forward to that. So, uh, we do have a unanimous vote, that motion does carry. Now, can I get a motion on item fifteen, ordinance zero-two-three-dash-one-two?
Mayor, I move that we amend-
Microphone?
Happily. I, I move that we amend ordinance-
I move that we amend ordinance 023-12, section 2, to add a fourth stipulation. All uses within this C1 are permitted except the following uses, and I will read the uses into the record. Adult boutique novelty merchandise, blood or bodily fluid donation center, check cashing or payday loan, dispensary, dollar store, gas station, gun store, laundromat, liquor store, pawn shop, smoker vape shop, tattoo shop, or thrift shop.
Second.
So I do have motion, Councilmember Tomachoff, I have a second from the Vice Mayor. You've heard the stipulations, any discussion on those? Hearing none. We need to vote this with stipulations and then as the change, correct. So now we're voting on those stipulations. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
On the stipulations, aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion does carry. Now, would you move that with those stipulations?
Yes, Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 023-12 as amended.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilmember Tomachoff, a second, Councilmember Clark, as amended. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Explain my vote.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to just say something to Mr. Bill Tomachoff, sir. If we fell short as a city council, if we fell short as a municipality on this issue with you, I personally apologize for that. I'm not sure where we did, but I do agree with you on the day that you all showed up, the last council meeting, and you were abruptly asked to leave because the item was pulled. I'm the one that asked the question, why? And so for that, I apologize myself. But I know that the city council and/or our city staff prides itself in moving along projects like this and shovel-ready to get continued business in our city. So I don't know where we fell short, if we did. I just know that one day, so I apologize for that. And then, for the residents who oppose this project, it's inevitable, this partial is going to be developed, whether it's under this leadership or 10 years from now, if it's five years from now, it's going to be developed. It's not going to stay vacant. I think that there's been a lot of happy memories made at Tomachoff Farms by way of parking there and over to the farm and having a great time. So I think that's been great, and I don't know how you'll continue, but I hope you do. And for the family who talked about the school next door, it's no longer a school, the school district still owns it. It's a resource center now, so traffic there is much less than it was before, so that alleviates some traffic. And then again, Dutch Bros is just a, not a deal that's been made yet, it still has to come back. There may be some type of lease being discussed now, but there's nothing in stone written that there's a Dutch Bros there. For that, knowing that the, and looking at all the paperwork that the developer has gone through, they've checked all the boxes, everything was done correctly, everything was done right, they met with staff, they went through the planning commission, it was approved there. There is nothing that they did inappropriately. For that, I vote aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Mayor, I'd like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
I'd like to thank AJ, thank you, sir, for being willing to work with the neighborhood. I want to thank the people who did reach out to me with their concerns, and hopefully this makes it a little bit more agreeable. As we said, development's going to happen. Under the current zoning, I don't know if everyone's aware of this, but under the current CO zoning, it could have been a plasma donation center, which is something that I don't think you really wanted in your neighborhood. I mean, no offense to plasma donation centers, but those kind of draw people into the neighborhood that tend to hang around. So I think this is the best compromise, is how we get things done in this world, and I think this is a fair compromise. So I wanted to again thank AJ for being willing to work on these stipulations, and I vote aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Explain my vote.
Go ahead.
This has been excruciatingly painful tonight, and I've only had to deal with it for less than an hour, I suppose. I can't imagine what it's been like for the residents, whether you're in support or opposed to it. I will say this is not our finest hour, and I hope that in the future, our neighbors are not put through this sort of stress again. I don't understand why this wasn't brought to us, either as a PAD with stipulations attached to it, or why stipulations didn't come much earlier in the process, like before it got to the planning commission. This has just been a slow-moving train wreck, and I feel terrible for you that you've had to go through it as long as you have. This is not the way that I like to see my city operate. I do think that thanks to Councilmember Tomachoff, who is not the representative of that district, and it's a shame that, you know, a council member from, you know, across town should have to be the savior of this, but I think thanks to her work, that we have a process, a project now with zoning and stipulations that it sounds like most people can live with. But again, this should have been resolved in a much better fashion, much earlier, in my opinion. So with my apologies, I vote aye.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I wish to...
Explain your vote?
Yes. With regard to Dutch Brothers, as has been stated, it is not a done deal. It has to go through the conditional use process, and one of the elements of that conditional use process is traffic design. It will have to go through a rigorous traffic design progress, process with the city to make it work. So keep that in mind as well, that the city will be looking at whether it's feasible to handle the traffic of a Dutch Brothers at that corner. And as for the remark from the previous council member, it's always nice when you have a relative who's a council member you can go to. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not even going there. Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Moving on to ordinances, Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 16, please?
Ordinance number 023-14, an ordinance that council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing to enter into an agreement with BYPG Holdings LLC for construction of the Main Street and Vision 2 Lift Station LLC. The Main Street PAD and Vision 2 development area is bounded by Glendale Avenue to the north, 99th Avenue to the east, the east bank of New River to the west, and Bethany Home Outfall Channel to the south.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening on this item is Don Bessler, Director of Engineering for the city of Glendale.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. And that concludes my presentation.
Folks, we have a meeting going on here. If you take your furbage outside, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Phelps, thank you. The item you have before you tonight is an ordinance asking for permission to enter into an agreement with BYPG Holdings. We know them commonly as Van Trust or Van Tile. What this document does is it allows for the implementation of a sewer lift station that after construction will ultimately be turned over to the city for operations as part of our system. It is approximately estimated to be about a $6 million project. This agreement calls out that Van Trust will be the person upfronting all of those costs, and the agreement puts the city in a position, not fiscally responsible, but administratively supporting the ability of Van Trust to recover the proportional fair share costs, so that they're only paying for their proportional fair share, even though they're building infrastructure in advance of all of the development. There are several pieces of development that are waiting to go. This is the last piece of important infrastructure that needs to happen in this area, area, excuse me, that will serve the area that we refer to as Vision 2 and the Main Street PAD. I think that's probably everything I need to say, and I'm certainly here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the council?
Mayor? Yes, I do have a question.
You have a question?
Yes, I do. So basically, as the development occurs, there'll be latecomer agreements to cover their share of this cost.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, exactly. Latecomer agreement is a great way to phrase it.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions? Can I get a motion on item 16, ordinance 023-14?
I move we pass and adopt ordinance 023-14 and waive reading beyond the title.
Second. I have motion from Councilmember Turner, second from Councilmember Hugh. To approve recommended action, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimous. Moving on to resolutions. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 17, 17?
Resolution number R23-34, a resolution that council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting a tentative budget of the amount required for the public expense for the city of Glendale for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, setting forth the revenue and the amount to be raised by direct property taxation for the various purposes, adopting city council's financial policies, and giving notice of the time for hearing taxpayers and for fixing tax levies.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report, is Budget and Finance Director Levi Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mayor and council, this item is to adopt the tentative budget for fiscal year 24. Once the tentative budget is approved, the final budget can be lower, but it cannot be higher. This is also a request for city council to give notice of the date for public hearings on the fiscal year 24 final budget adoption and the property tax levy on June 13, 2023, at 5:30 p.m. here in the council chambers, and the fiscal year 24 property tax levy adoption on June 27, 2023, also at 5:30 p.m. here in council chambers. There are two changes to the tentative budget since you last saw it on April 25, 2023. We received council consensus on April 25, 2023, to add 5.8 million of funding from the general fund to the Heroes Park Ball Field Capital Improvement Project. We also have added a new project totaling $825,000 of funding from the general fund in fiscal year 24 for a covered parking structure at the Sign Building. This project was requested by the city attorney's office, and we received the estimate for this project after the last budget workshop. Staff is recommending the addition of this project. The proposed tentative budget for fiscal year 24 is $1.26 billion, and includes an operating budget of $595 million, a capital improvement plan budget of $430 million, a debt service budget of $98 million, and a contingency appropriation of $137 million. The total revenue budget for fiscal year 24 is $990 million, and the transfer budget is $224 million. The budget does not include an increase to the primary property tax rate. Exhibit A of the council item contains the detail of the proposed tentative budget. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Tomachoff.
Yeah, thank you. I didn't catch the amount on the covered parking.
It's 800, Mayor and Councilmember Tomachoff, it's $825,000 is the estimate that we received.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor?
Mr. Melner?
Just one quick question. You said that this is the tentative budget that cannot be raised.
Correct. Mayor, Councilmember Melner, the tentative budget is the highest amount of the budget between now and final budget adoption. If you wish, that can be lower, but the after tentative budget, the final budget can never be higher.
We're not adding anymore.
I guess that, because we, Councilmember Tomachoff and I had talked about the possibility of perhaps having some resources for the sober living issue that we're going to be discussing as council. And if that's the case, then we would not be able to get that into the current next budget. And that concerns me, because I think council needs to discuss that.
Mayor, Councilmember Melner, we do have an amount assigned to contingency, and at the council's request, we could always use contingency to fund that item.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Do we have a description of the parking structure, covered parking structure for the city attorney's office?
Mr. Turner, I believe Don Bessler, Director of Engineering, can give you that description.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilmember Turner, what we've scoped out is a shade structure, probably could have a solar element to it. It hasn't been designed yet, but that's what we're, something similar to what's been recently being put up at FRAC.
How many spaces will be covered?
Mayor, Councilmember, I don't recall the exact number. I have a number in my head, but I'm not comfortable with it, but we can provide that as follow-up information. It's not a couple, and it's not a dozen, it's more than that.
Forty-plus or minus?
Again, Mayor, Councilmember, I just don't recall the number. I want to, but it's in the realm of 40.
It's 57.
I'm being told, I'm being whispered that it's 57, Mayor.
57 covered parking spaces for $825,000?
Mayor, Councilmember, again, we're just in the early stages of scoping that, but we're using comparables from what we've been seeing out there. There's three different, if I recall, there's three different sub-parking lots in that area, so it's not just a straight run of parking.
Comes out to over 14,000 covered space. Well, this is preliminary.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor. I'm a little dumb. Is this being presented to us at the first time, for the very first time, right now?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, that's correct. It was a late addition requested by the city attorney's office, and we received the numbers from engineering and added, recommend adding this at the, at this point. This, although, sorry, let me start again. This is somewhat of a placeholder for that, that's an estimate of the cost. This will come back to council as a contract once the information is solidified and the design is completed.
I feel like we should have at least received some sort of memo, then we're here to tentatively adopt the budget, and oh, by the way, we're, I mean, I'm a little dumbfounded by this, honestly. Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, again, this was just a placeholder. The council will still have the ability to say no to the project when we have more, you know, detailed information. As a reminder, this is not only for the city attorney's use, we have code enforcement there, where we have a large number of city vehicles. And so it did come in, come in late, but we felt having a placeholder there gave the council options to consider versus not doing it and waiting a year. At the end of the day, you still will control it and will give us a little bit of time to get more refinement on the design.
Would it, Mayor, may I ask, would it qualify, is it, would it be bonded for? Would it be cash on hand? How would it, how would be, what's the intent to pay for this?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, it would come from general fund cash.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I would ask that staff make this very clear when it does come back to us, that this was something we talked about, and that at least one council member had reservations about doing.
Crazy.
So that we know when this comes to us, and it's just not on consent agenda or something like that. And I'm not sure waiting a year would be the end of the world. And I just, $825,000 to have it thrown at us at the last minute, a chunk of change, and $14,400 per parking space, seems a little egregious. I get it's just a placeholder, but once the place is held, it's easy to fill up. Thank you.
Mayor? Go ahead.
Where's the location of this parking garage?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, it's at the Sign Building.
At the Sign Building?
Mm-hmm.
And is it intent to have solar? Is that why we're asking for the parking?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, that's one of the options that's being considered, based on my understanding of the project.
But I guess what I'm asking is, is somebody really hoping that we get solar to that building, therefore try to get the parking garage in now? Because the way you build a garage and the infrastructure for a parking cover for solar use is much different than not having it. So I'm just wondering, just a reason we're bringing this up now. So is it for solar? Is that the intent, or we just want covered parking for vehicles?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Aldama, no, the principal purpose of the project would be to allow our employees that are located at the Sign Building, which would include both the prosecutorial and civil side of the city attorney's office and code enforcement, to be able to park their vehicles, whether they're city-issued vehicles or their own personal vehicle, not being out in the sun. And so it really was just to provide, you know, covered structure. We want to look what that, what the cost would be. And again, we'll come back to the project, and you'll be in control about whether you think it was a good value to do it. And if it's not a good value, the council can certainly pass on the project. But if we can get it value-engineered and get it designed in a way that's cost-effective, we just spent several million dollars, the city has spent several million dollars rehabbing the Sign Building, so it's a long-term investment for, you know, for the city. the Sign Building, so it's a long-term investment for, you know, for the city. We felt it was a project that would merit. If you recall, the council, since I've been here, has mentioned on numerous occasion the concern about parking a lot of the city vehicles out in the, in the, in the sun. So we have a good portion of those vehicles at the Sign Building, won't be employee vehicles, but they'll be the city-owned vehicles, and so we know we can extend the life of those. So again, it's very early in the design. If we can find a business model that makes sense doing solar, and there's a good business model for doing that, we'll certainly look at that option, but we'll also come back with this, try to be as value-engineered and streamlined on the cost as possible.
This is precisely why items like this shouldn't come at last minute, because we're not going to have a full discussion tonight about this. I get, I get what it is, it's a placeholder, but what's the justification for needing covered parking for certain employees and certain city vehicles where not every vehicle in the city and every employee has covered parking? And then the next question is, if we decide not to do that, do those funds go just backstage in the general fund and it becomes surplus? So I guess I'm going to ask, since you brought it up, so what is the general justification to have covered parking? That's all this is for. You said for vehicles and for some personal vehicles.
Again, we're trying to look long-range for all of our employees to be able to provide them spaces. We mentioned FRAC, we're looking at other facilities as well to get them out of the sun as our weather continues to get more extreme. If the council doesn't feel that's a good, you know, good utilization of the resources, we can certainly walk this backwards and stop the project. In fact, if there's not, you know, if the council has concerns tonight, we can, we can take this up next year at the CIP discussion, and we can certainly do this. We just felt, from what we've heard over time, the concern about having cars out in the sun, and this is a new facility, a lot of the city attorney's office parked in our garage where they had covered parking and now have been moved to the Sign Building where they don't have covered parking. So it was just staff trying to anticipate what we think the council has been stating. If we've missed that, our apologies, and we can certainly put the brakes on it very quickly.
Yeah, I've heard many councilmembers up here say that this is not a problem that citizens have brought to me, so I don't think it's worthy of discussion. I have not had any employees tell us that we need, that they need covered parking. I've not heard that that was an issue. CIP is most likely the best place for that, but thank you for answering my questions.
Mayor. Thank you, mayor. I say let's just go ahead and approve it tonight as part of the budget. Remember, the budget cannot go higher, but it can go lower. If in the future, a majority of council decides that this is not a good move, then we can deny the request. But for now, rather than trying to figure it out at the 11th hour, let us just go ahead and approve the appropriation, and we will have further discussion on the issue to come in the future, I am absolutely sure.
Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. I just, so if we were to do this the normal way in the CIP, I know we don't have the capacity, but wouldn't this be covered under streets and parking? And that'd be something we could bond for, it's a capital project, we're out of money. But I know that there was a consensus up here earlier today to not use cash for this type of thing, and then here we are, asking for almost a million dollars for something that could be, could be, if we had capacity, under parking and streets to bond for. Am I mistaken in that, or not?
Mayor, councilmember Tomachoff, we could bond for it. Unfortunately, we are out of authorization on streets and parking.
Right. But there was a discussion earlier today about using cash to fund projects for streets and parking, and there was opposition to do to that, where I had mentioned the $5.8 million for parks, because we don't have any money to invest in streets and parking. And now, now people are willing to take cash and put it into a streets and parking category job that really only benefits 50-some city employees. No offense to city employees, but I really feel like I see a real, I don't know what the word is I'm trying to look for, but it's, it's, it's the same thing. It's exactly the same thing that people were principally opposed to earlier. Thank you.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm looking at this location on Google Earth as well, and it seems to me, and you're welcome to correct me if I'm wrong, but a majority of these parking spaces we're talking about are actually in parking lots that we recently offered, in essence, for sale as part of an RFP. Now, we weren't satisfied with the proposals we got, but at no time did the council take this property off the list of things we would consider selling, and it just kind of befuddles me that one division's talking about spending close, you know, 800 and some thousand dollars to put, to cover parking that we're interested in selling or raising to a higher level of It befuddles me. And as far as the budget, we could, you know, if you want to leave it in here for now and haggle it later, that's fine, but just so we know, we could say, no, we're not going to placeholder this, and that that money that would have been the placeholder can be returned back to the general fund, and the general fund is all contingency, and we can pull it out later if we actually do decide to go with this.
Mayor. Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. I would agree with the comments that councilmember Clark stated, simply that, you know, this is a less imminent item, and we have not had, as a council, had a chance to discuss it, but we're doing, discussing it quite a bit tonight, but, which is unnecessary, in my opinion, because this has to come back to us. The contract has to come back to us, and if we don't want to do it, and if the cost is too high per parking spot, we can simply say, no, we don't want to do that. So I think we're wasting our time tonight. We could just go ahead, put the cap in there in the budget, it's a cap, basically, but not actually agreeing to spend it until we see the contract and we really know what the costs are. The costs, we don't know those yet, really. We're doing a high-end estimate, I would guess, but I would guess the real, the actual cost would become much lower, and if it doesn't include solar, it'd be much lower than even that. So I believe we can just stop discussing tonight and just go ahead and have a discussion, a full discussion, an all-day discussion if we need to, at a later date on this topic, and not waste our time tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, I, oops, need to turn my mic on, I apologize. Yeah, I don't mind adopting it tonight, and it's been said, we don't have to do it, but I don't mind taking a look for it when they have it all designed and have a price on it, and we'll see if the city council agrees. Any other discussion? I guess my thought is the one thing we've been hearing for a long time, the last three or four years, is it's getting difficult to find employees to incentivize. Not a bad incentive to know that you can go to work in an antique building and have a car still going to be shaded, if it's your own personal car, if it's a company car. The costs of some of these vehicles today are $40,000, $50,000, and it doesn't take very long for the sun to cook them, which lowers the price of the vehicle to the point where when we do sell them, they bring a lot less in value. A lot of the times, they don't have a lot of miles on them, but if they look wore out, if the paint's really bad and the dash is cracked and the seats are torn, not torn, but diminished because of ultraviolet rays, you know, that's something that we need to look at. More importantly, again, like I started off with, trying to keep our employees happy, is I think is a big deal. I don't look at this tonight as spending money, I look at this tonight as taking money that we have, putting it in an area, when they come back and prove to me and it sounds like a lot of the council, that it's a great plan and it's worth it, at that point, we can make that decision to support. If not, the money didn't go anywhere. It goes right back into our general fund. So I have no problem supporting this. I would like a lot more information when it gets closer as far as what it's going to look like, how it's going to fit into that small area. It is a small parking area over there. And the last thing I want to do is have somebody pulling there with a UPS truck and something and take, take our shade structure out. So that's the kind of concerns that I'm going to have. If we could get solar, I think we're way past due on solar, depending on what the solar does. Is solar going to go to the building and help lower our electric costs, or is it going to be just for lights underneath the awning at night? I don't know. That's the information I'd like to know before I would support it, but I do support as a placeholder. Okay. With that, can I get a motion? Anybody like to make a motion?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 17.
Second.
Have a motion, councilmember Eldama, second, from the vice mayor to approve the recommended action. Any other discussion on this motion?
Can I say something?
No, you can't. Sorry. We'll conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Explain my vote.
Go ahead.
Just for the citizens, this is a tentative budget adoption, and there's an additional vote for a final adoption on June 13. With that, I vote nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Like to explain my vote, mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. I am struggling with the amount of cash that we're spending in this budget as a city, considering the economic times. We're spending $40 million of our cash on a city hall remodel that I believe is, we could do it for less, opening up stairwells and things like that, or while it's nice, it's, it's not something that we need. $5.8 million for the fields at Hero Parks, which I'm absolutely supportive of Hero's Park, but the fact of the matter is, we don't have any money in our streets and parking budget this year, and no one's willing to take any of this cash and park it in the streets. We're going out for a bond election in November. It's going to be sometime next spring, probably before we have any money to put into streets and parking, even if we, because you've got to go out for bond, this just doesn't happen, you know, when the vote happens in November and December, we're going to have the money. That's not how it's going to work. So I'm having a really hard time, and then an $800,000 surprise right here on the dais. You know, I've been, this is, I think, my eighth or ninth budget vote, and I've never voted no on a budget before, but I vote no.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Explain my vote, please.
Go ahead.
Another mess. I thought we only going to have one tonight, but here we are again. I have real reservations about this budget, the way it's forming up and the direction it's headed in. I will vote yes tonight, but I don't think anybody should take it for granted that I will be voting yes on the final adoption. I'm only voting tonight, yes tonight, so that we can meet the statutory requirements. And with that, I vote aye.
Vice mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion does pass. Council comments and suggestions, we'll start off with Mr. Eldama.
Thank you, mayor. This afternoon, I was invited to spend some time with the governor and the tribal leaders of the state to celebrate $2 billion that has been donated and given to cities across the state, and I was able to share with, with the state and those in the room, what we've been able to do with millions of dollars that the gaming compact has provided us, like providing a fire truck and apparatuses for firefighters and tools and equipment for police officers and police vehicles. And I want to thank the Don Odom Nation and their leadership for the partnership with the city of Glendale. They continue to thrive, and it's been a great partnership. Thank you.
Councilmember Hugh?
Nothing, mayor.
Councilmember Melner?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
I'd just like to thank the residents and staff that came out, I guess it's been almost two weeks ago, whenever the Choya barbecue was, I've forgotten, but thank you for coming out, I appreciate you attending. I appreciate staff taking time to come and set up and interact with residents, and the residents really enjoy it, and they really appreciate, so thank you to staff.
Is that it? Councilmember Turner?
Not tonight, mayor.
Vice mayor?
No comment, mayor.
Okay, and I do have a comment. You heard me speak earlier tonight about the young lady sitting smack dab in the middle of the auditorium. She is going to be coming to the induction ceremony that I have an annual event, that'll be this Friday, and if you haven't heard of it, I'll briefly tell you what it is. It's 400, potentially more than 400, but 400 students in high school that are either Glendale residents, or they go to a Glendale high school, that have made the decision to serve our country. And we hold a special ceremony for these young people to honor that decision for them to go out, become part of our military, all the branches. And if you think about it, it's an all-volunteer force. No longer do we have just telling people that, make your, make your mind up, you can go to army or you can go to jail. It's 100% volunteer. And these young people that are graduating high school, very, very shortly, whether you're aware of it or not, less than 1% of our entire population in the United States is in our military. Of the high school students that graduate high school, less than 30% of the kids graduating high school today are able to go into the military. And I'll repeat it, less than 30% of the kids going into the military today are able to go into the military. 70% because of some sort of dependence, some sort of disciplinary problems, obesity, you name it, lots and lots of different things that the military say, no, we want somebody different. And then our academics. The schools that are graduating kids today that are able to go into the military should be incredibly proud that these young people, number one, can serve our country, and number two, have made that choice. My purpose of starting this induction ceremony several years ago was to honor, to support the young people, but even more importantly, the families, the moms, the dads, the aunts, the uncles, the siblings of these young people that made that decision to serve, and let them know that it's a community of people that care. So we have an auditorium that we're expecting about 1,200 people in. Of the 400 kids, we have a choir, almost 100-member choir, that will be singing patriotic songs. We also have a lot of volunteers. I have some veterans that tend to get pretty emotional, because most veterans will tell you, when they went in, nobody ever had a party for them. It's a big deal, we give them a challenge coin, a certificate. We have a four-star retired general that used to command at Luke Air Force Base and then went on to command in the European Theater, very respected, Robin Rand is his name, will be flying specifically out here just for this event. He did it for us last year, and he loved it, and asked, could he come back again this year? So it's available on, online, we are doing the online. Adam, I thought you were going to give me a address here that I could give to these people?
It's on there.
Well, I'm looking for it. Okay, I don't know where it's at. I don't know where it's at. We'll find it. Do you have it?
YouTube.com/mayorwires.
That's it?
You can watch live, yeah.
Well, that's pretty easy. Okay. So with that said, if you get a chance, go online Friday night at 6:00 p.m. and check it out. I think you're going to be really amazed, and I think you're going to be very, very proud of all these Glendale students that actually is able to serve our country. I know I am. So with that, we're going to go on to our citizens' comments. I have just the one gentleman that's sitting down there. Sir, if you'll come up, state your name.
Karen.
He's coming up right now. Karen, did you need to speak also? Okay. So Karen, if you want to work your way towards the front when he's done, we'll bring you up. If you would, sir, state your name and then your crossroads, if you live in Glendale, if you don't live in Glendale, the city. You have three minutes.
My name is James Masters. I live in the Surrolo District. On August of 1921, August, excuse me, let me get to the right page, August 24, 2021, there was a submittal by the city manager's office, Mr. Rick St. John, and you submitted code violations, and you, I would, I'm curious why you guys are costing the taxpayers and homeowners, I've lived in Glendale for over 30 years, hundreds of thousands of dollars on our property value, because now we can't park our vehicles. I can't have, according to this individual who wrote up this I can't have, according to this individual who wrote up this citation for vehicles. I'm asking a question.
Okay, we, we don't answer in response. You have three minutes to tell us your concerns, and then we try to follow up after the meeting's over, if possible.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I would ask that this manager direct one of his code folks to, toward Mr. Masters and explain exactly what situation it is.
No, it's costing me hundreds of thousands of dollars. I get this citation that is nothing but threats. I'm going to, you guys are going to charge me $100 here. You're going to charge me $300 here for a code violation. You're threatening me as a citizen. You don't want me as a citizen of the city of Glendale. I would like to know why.
Again, sir, we don't respond to your questions. We allow you to tell us what your concerns are, and we'll have somebody talk with you.
In other words...
In other words, it's exactly what I said. If you'd like someone to talk with you, if you'll step aside, somebody will talk with you.
So you're basically refusing to answer.
No, sir, listen to me really clearly. I'm asking you, if you'll step aside, we'll have somebody come talk with you. That's what I'm saying.
Mayor, if, if I may, it's against the law for us to, to respond to you. We can only direct you to, the open meeting law does not allow us as a council to address a concern that comes to us that day.
Sir, that's correct.
And so we, we can only direct you to someone who can answer that. Otherwise, we're breaking the law.
And who is that going to be?
If you'll step aside, somebody will come to you, sir. Thank you. Ms. Aborn.
Is this his name?
Once again, good evening, Mayor Wires and members of city...
Ma'am, move the microphone where we can hear you. There you go.
I used to be a teacher. I thought I could project. Good evening, Mayor Wires once again, and members of city council. And vice mayor, thank you so much for your kind words earlier. My name is Karen Aborn. I live in the Oketillo District. I have two procedural topics to address tonight. Now that the declaration of COVID emergency has been rescinded, I believe that it is time for the city of Glendale to again require in-person citizens' participation meetings. The current practice of allowing only Zoom meetings marginalizes people who cannot effectively participate in reviewing proposals on a computer screen. I was not offered an opportunity to review plans for a project in my neighborhood within a reasonable timeframe, such as less than 17 months from the initial request. I even reiterated request for an ADA accommodation at the preliminary plat hearing where one commissioner voted nay because of an infrastructure concern and because a disabled citizen was not assisted. My second topic aligns with the first. If a final plat is on the consent agenda and a citizen cannot comment on it in person, the city clerk's office says an email statement should be sent to council members in care of the city clerk. The message would be disseminated to council members, would be a part of the official record, but would not be read aloud at the meeting. I followed that directive on the same project that I noted, mentioned before, noting that I wish to review the proposal for ADA accommodation, and received a reply from one council member that he would look into the topic. That council member did not comment on the final plat when it was approved. When the consent agenda came up for a vote, Mayor Wires asked the clerk if there were any citizen comment cards, but did not ask if any letters had been received, which would remind council members of my concerns if they had read my letter. In summary, I am suggesting that, one, city council again mandate in-person citizen participation meetings, and, two, that the mayor ask the clerk if any speaker cards or letters in lieu of a personal appearance have been submitted for consent agenda items. Hopefully, I will be the last person with an invisible disability to be marginalized in my hometown. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Barba, Vuba, Uba? Is that you?
Yeah.
Okay, come on up to the microphone, sir. For the record, state your name, your district that you live in, if you know it. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
All right. Carl Naba, Suaro District. Esteemed member of the city councils, teenagers today are amongst the most under and misrepresented groups in the city. Without representation, many teenagers feel undervalued and misunderstood in city events, volunteering, and public services, such as our amazing libraries. This has led to less and less teen participation amongst the city with low satisfaction rates amongst teenagers for the city's efforts. Above that, teens are facing a large series of serious mental, physical, and emotional problems, day by day, with a severe lack of knowledge on how and where to get help. Throughout my time working with both the Glendale-Foot Hills Library and the Glendale's Mayor Youth Advisory Council, I saw little chance to speak out and represent the community of teenagers, despite seeing teen program after teen program fail due to lack of interest. I also saw a lack of effort to address the issues that affect teens primarily, such as addiction, mental health issues, and peer pressure. I ask the city council today to reach out to the vast network of teenage volunteers in the city system, including those in the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, to address these issues and to establish a clear line of communication between teenagers who volunteer within the city and the city government itself. I ask that, together with the legal background and prestige of the Glendale City Government and the perspective of the youth, my act and the city council work to create a better, safer, and happier environment for teenagers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dibler, you're up. Your name, your city, you have three minutes, sir.
Okay. Hi, my name is James Dibler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona. I'm here today to discuss the growth of West Gate Entertainment District without the Arizona Coyotes. West Gate Entertainment District is growing without the Arizona Coyotes because there are more concerts and graduating ceremonies scheduled at Desert Diamond Arena. There are more visitors visiting West Gate and Desert Diamond Arena for more entertainment, food, drinks, and football. West Gate is more popular than the Dead Mattress Cinema in Phoenix, Arizona. The Arizona Coyotes blew a chance to stay at Desert Diamond Arena and instead moved into a 5,000-seat mullet arena in Tempe, Arizona. The Super Bowl XLVII made a biggest impact for the city of Glendale and the state of Arizona. Finally, our Lake Glendale Community College to host their 2024 graduation ceremony at this beautiful arena. This would be a good experience for GZC students to see what West Gate has to offer. Currently, Peoria Sports Complex holds that GZC 2023 graduation ceremony. It would be a good decision for Glendale Community College to move their graduation ceremony from Peoria Sports Complex to West Gate Entertainment District. GZC needs to partner with ASM Global to make this partnership happen in the future. Thank you for all time and attention to these important matters.
Thank you, sir. Either being no further business before the council, and I'd like to thank everyone for attending. No objection from the council. We're adjourned.